Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Presser here?
Here.
Mr. Johnson here. Uh, Mrs. Hunter Zapsen, Mr. Daniel Zapsen, Mrs. Lacy here, Mrs. Sterns here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. So, the point of tonight's meeting is to give you all an explanation and information that we think you need for TIPS and TIP extensions, specifically as they relate to District 228. We have two TIP extension requests, one for Posen, TIP number one, and Country Club Hills. So, this is just background information. First, what is a TIP? A TIP stands for Tax Increment Financing. These are tools that cities can use to promote economic growth and development in a specific geographical area. TIP money can be spent on public works projects or given as subsidies to encourage private development. It can also make it easier for a city to acquire private property and large buildings to help bring in new construction. Either way, the point is economic growth and development in a particular area. And TIPS can last for 23 years. There are three stages to a TIP: creating a TIP, obtaining revenue from increased property values, and spending the money. In order to create a TIP, an eligibility study must be done to determine if this TIP area would meet the criteria. If the area does meet the standards, then there's a redevelopment plan and a budget put in place. This basically means we're going to determine what we're going to use TIP money on, which specific projects, and how much it's going to cost. The second step is obtaining revenue from increased property values. So, when a TIP is started, property tax revenue is frozen for all of the taxing bodies at the level it was at just before the TIP is created. This means that no additional property tax revenue dollars can be brought in to taxing bodies higher than that amount. Secondly, taxes on all new property value in the TIP go into the TIP fund rather than to the taxing bodies. Then they are reinvested into those specific projects put together by the redevelopment plan. The third step is spending the money, which basically means this is how we're going to pay for each of the projects. This can go towards planning expenses, preparing for redevelopment, renovation of existing land, etc.
How does the business inherit? Do the businesses that own it, do they have? Do the businesses that were there, do they have access to the TIP? What do you mean?
Well, they can't. I mean, this municipality has to develop a plan of what they're going to use the money for. And if it's eligible, there's only certain things that the municipality would use TIP money for. So, for instance, if they want to use it for improving the facades along a commercial strip plaza, that would qualify and then they would apply, the business, the existing business owner might apply to the village and say, "We want some of this money to help improve the facade." And then that, in theory, enhances everybody and makes it more attractive for everybody.
This number two, this first bullet, I guess, can you explain that a little more in layman's terms? I get the first one, but I'm not completely clear on the rest.
So, basically, what that means is that you have a base here, clear, that the TIP is created. And that means that your property tax revenue is going to be frozen at that amount. We cannot get any more property tax dollars higher than what we got when the TIP is created.
Okay.
So, that's what the property tax revenue being frozen means.
And they do that by setting the assessed value. So, the assessed value, the mechanism that they, 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 what they happen. So, you'll get into, for the example of this TIP. So, if it had $5 million in assessed value, and then, because they still get the same property tax bill as they were before.
Okay.
So, now, if it goes up to $10 million, the base was $5 million. And say, there's only one business in the TIP. In that TIP, that area had $5 million of all land, and they put a $5 million building on it, and so it rose to $10 million. Property tax bill would be the same top property tax bill as the business next to them, the same tax rates, just like, but half the money, $5 million, would go to taxing bodies, the other half would go to the TIP. So, Cook County actually has to know, it's a big computer system, knowing that this one here, you know, they have base EAV of this, and so that money still could go to school district. And any increments go into a separate TIP fund that the municipality controls.
But basically, the point for here, we're collecting money.
The idea for qualifying factors is that this is a plain area, it's not developing. And so, they have to do something to, that's the theory, to incentivize people to develop. So, if it did develop, then that EAV base, that assessed valuation base, might stay at that $5 million. But if the declarative, if the city start doing some things to make development branded, the property value goes up. As the property values goes up during those 23 years, the taxes on the incremental value go to the village TIP fund. Okay? So, the school district is losing money, it's just not acquiring increase initially.
Because it's going into the TIP fund, which is being used to develop, go to the projects of the TIP.
That's the big, so that's where incremental comes in. Incremental to EAV, EAV to EAP.
Okay, thank you for that. So, TIPS can be extended for a maximum of 12 years, which could bring the potential life of your TIP to a total of 35 years. You have your original 23 years, you can extend up to 12. So, you have the potential of having a TIP on the books for 35 years, basically. However, in order for a TIP to be extended, all of the taxing bodies in the TIP must approve it. This is in contrast to the creation of a TIP, because when you're creating a TIP, the municipality has sole authority. We don't get say, we don't have to vote to approve it. The city has the sole authority of that. Now, if a TIP is not extended, when it expires, that incremental EAV that we were just talking about is added as new construction to our district's tax levy calculation, which would produce an additional revenue above the tax.
And that new property is not added?
Right. It's not added on as new construction.
So, it adds to your base.
But you're not stuck with, oh, well, it's more than the 2% CDAs.
Nope. To use additional revenue.
So, the first one we're going to talk about is Posen's TIP number one, which is... Oh, sure.
Sorry.
We're going to first talk about Country Club Hills. So, District 228 is 100% of the Country Club Hills TIP. There are no other, we would be the sole high school district in Country Club Hills TIP. This is just a map, so I've got the purple outline. With the Country Club Hills TIP, it was created in 2008. They're asking for revenue from 23 years to 35 years. It has not expired. What they're going to do is ask for the additional 12 years to be added on right now. There is no incremental EAV to date, which means that there's no TIP fund incremental taxes to date either. So, you'll see the difference between Country Club Hills versus Posen's.
So, there's no money in the TIP, so it's...
Correct, yes.
Well, it's been in existence for 10 years, and I think at one time, they got $75. But basically...
If you remember what happened in 2008, the market in the real estate market. So, it's what we call underwater. You know, even if there's not development, you usually think land values would go up and there'd be a little bit increment. In this case, you know, it's largely vacant, but the property values have dropped so much that the current value is less than the base for 2008.
So, Country Club Hills TIP is a little bit different than Posen. Here's the map of the Posen TIP. Number one, it's Sibley Boulevard. It's the area highlighted in purple and yellow. And then, the next map shows which area would consist of District 228. And we're estimating that District 228 allocates 80% of the Posen TIP number one.
Can you maybe just like draw the word Division Street is and show like comparisons to... Yeah, I'll do that. So, I mean, it, you know, this is the district boundary on this side here, and it ends at Division Street, which is right, is this Division Street here? Is it? No. What Avenue Street right here, I can't see it. This is the Division. So, just go boom here. So, this is District 205, I think Thornton, on that side over here. But the rest is District 228. So, you can't see that, just a small sliver. I think just basically, this is of that purple that's not in District 228.
But there's other chances that...
Correct, right, we're not believing that. So, we're saying 80% of this TIP would be in District 228. So, here are some facts and numbers, just that these are important to note. First and foremost, this TIP is set to expire next year, so December 2019. When this TIP was created in 1995, our base EAV was 11.3 million. And then, in 2016, our EAV grew 5.5 million, bringing us to 16.9 million in 2016. So, as I mentioned, there's that incremental EAV, 5.5. In 2016, the TIP fund incremental taxes were $871,000. As I mentioned, we believe that District 228 is about 80% of this TIP. So, 80% of 871,000 is $697,000. We are not the only taxing body in this TIP. So, we would say of that 80%, we would believe that we are 37% of the tax bill. So, what we did was we took $697,000, times it by 37%, which we believe would be allocated to District 228, and came up with $258,000. Now, if this TIP were to be extended 12 years, what you would do is take the $258,000 that we've come up with being our cut, basically, and times it by 12 years, which would be the life of the TIP extension. And that brings us to $3 million District 228 revenue that would instead be allocated towards the TIP.
Of new ones that take away.
And this is, again, assuming that there's no change in the increment or that District 228's proportion of the TIP is going to change.
Where do we get the $871,000?
So, $871,000 is the money that was generated from the TIP in 2016. We pulled that number from the county website.
So, I follow all the bullets, the incremental EAV by $5 million, the difference. But $871 has nothing to do with that $5 million?
Well, $871,000 is going to be what the TIP fund brought in in 2016. So, that was...
You kind of could compute it by, the average tax rate on EAV is about 14%, I think, maybe closer to 15%. You know, the tax rate. So, if you take about 15% of 5.5, that generates about $871. But it's a combination of everybody's, every tax bill in the EAV and what portion of that went into it. So, Cook County has a robust record of every TIP in Cook County and what amount of money went into that TIP. And so, it actually has, every year, how much money went into the TIP since its inception on Cook County's website. So, it's a good number, it's a solid number. So, Cook County said that they, because Cook County is the one that distributes the taxes. And so, they said $871,000 went into that TIP. And that's basically, you know, various tax rates off of that incremental EAV.
Okay.
But I think, yeah, that percent would be $552,000. If you take another, another 5% of that, that's about, their average tax bill, I think, at Posen, about 14% or 15% of the assessed value. So, if you take that, that comes out to be exactly one.
Do you have any other questions? Any other questions on the presentation?
So, we have two towns asking for an extension. I invited them both to go present their stories to us. And we can put this on our agenda for the January meeting after we get some direction. Typically, I would make a recommendation based on research and present that to you. This is what I didn't feel quite as comfortable presenting to you with my recommendation, because it does impact taxpayer dollars. So, I've invited both the cities to go and put their case on, and we'll leave it up to you guys to make the appropriate fair decision. So, with that, I'd like to invite Country Club Hills and Mayor Fortin to stand and go forward.
Good evening, everyone. We really are honored that you submitted and brought us this opportunity to stand before you today. First of all, happy New Year, everyone. As you know, the City of Country Club Hills, we have a 23-year TIP. We're into about 10 years of that TIP at this point in time. We had a lot of momentum going in 2008. The market crashed, and we had a couple developers who wanted to bring an outlet mall to the area. And because of the crash, the finances didn't work out, and everything kind of fell apart. So, today, we have another investor that wants to come in. Just recently, there was an honor board tribute in December, we have a copy here that tells a pretty good story about that particular area. The area that we're speaking about is on 167th Street, right between Glasskey and I-57 and Cicero. In that area, you might have seen it. We have signs out there saying Outlet Mall, Chicago Outlet Mall. Big sign is coming, which is a million and a half dollar sign out there. So, we have to figure out some way to pay for that. But basically, oh, yeah, here we go.
Which area, is it the whole area or...?
The whole area.
Oh, the whole area?
But basically... Uh, this is the area up there, yeah. We're looking for hotel, water slide, and all of this good stuff that we had planned. But the developers that we're speaking to now, we just need a little longer run on the TIP, because we only have 12 years left. And by the time we can get something developed, within probably like another two or three years, four years or so, that TIP will be coming pretty close to expire. So, we're here tonight and ask for an extension. And I have with me tonight my economic development chairperson, Mr. Mike Hutter, who's going to speak to you and give you some information about what they're trying to do there in City of Country Club Hills.
Mayor Fortin spoke really well about the area in there. But basically, Cicero, 167th Street, it's a couple hundred acres of land, it's all vacant. And the bottom line is, the TIP is a marketing tactic by the city to try to get in, a developer develops projects. The tax exception levels are very high. But if we need to develop that area with some larger anchor, it would dramatically drop property taxes for residents. And with that area, the way it is, and as big as it is, and the fact it's a development, the only way we'll ever get it developed is if we offer some sort of incentive as far as developing the infrastructure, you know, dealing with the roads, dealing with, you know, water and sewer. So, basically, what would happen is by capturing it as a TIP and putting that TIP money into the project itself, the TIP monies would pay for, basically, the roads and the infrastructure to then entice a builder to go in and do the property. They could benefit from it in some degree because of the tax relief that the TIP could then provide, because we might, you know, throw in some other, you know, or could make it so their build is better. But the bottom line is, if we don't have a TIP there, it will stay vacant. It's not even being developed as far as, there's nothing going on there. And of course, in 2007, we were coming close to getting the outlet mall. We had the whole tent casino license going on, and they were hoping to maybe develop, you know, a hotel there and whatnot. So, they went ahead and gambled and put the TIP there to try to get people in, and nothing happened. So, you know, here now, 10 years later, nothing happening on the TIP. And we're asking for an extension, because the, right now, there's a seller and a buyer involved, and then they also have a developer involved. And they're basically saying, since we only have about 12 years left on the TIP, the likelihood of getting it fully developed in time isn't likely without having more time to recoup the money. So, they want more time on the TIP so they can get the project started and fully developed, and then us have enough TIP dollars to then, you know, pay for all the infrastructure and whatnot. So, the bottom line is two things, that it's, you know, it's enticing, you know, marketing methodology by the city. And if we don't do this, nothing's going to happen to that property, especially Cook County. Because, keep in mind too, along with Posen, all of us, we're dealing with Indiana, we're dealing with Cook County. And we have to have a competitive edge, and TIP offers the competitive edge to us. Oh, and then, I, the handouts. The first one, the article, they wrote, basically explaining what the developers is interested in doing. They have a little design of what they're proposing. They're still thinking commercial along with the warehousing. This is a very dramatic warehousing stuff there. But, you know, they're kind of just laying it out. I added a TIP primer, just like what you had in the presentations that could help you in the last one here. Oh, just showing the fact that we have gotten no TIP revenue from the property whatsoever, it's just stayed, you know, zero. So, one year was $75,000. So, that's where we're at with our product. So, yeah, I guess...
A question to the board, would be put in a formal board meeting, would you want an answer? Could we move this to the next one?
Well, we have a developer that's kind of on the way, he's waiting.
The sooner the better.
Sooner the better. If you can get it to us, just we'll have to make some action. We'll be okay with it. We just want to make sure that we have something to offer.
And in the risk of extending it to, for this one, it's really minimal to none, because there is nothing going on. So, would I put anything in there?
This developer is getting his plans to the whole area? Or is it, he starts at the only other joint?
I mean, 50 acres. Actually, that may have just fallen behind.
Yeah, right.
And if you made with him.
Yeah.
Somehow, something got away from them. They've got two developers that's in the fifth year now. And the second developer is Mr. Dow. He owns about 200 acres of that parcel of land up here.
How many did you say were lost?
I think it's about 300 and some acres.
And I got to calculate it. It is, it's in August, for sure.
It's good. Yeah, something like that. But the one owner for the outlet mall, that portion, it was like 125. And he's willing to sell that. And so, the remaining balance of that is owned by another developer. And he's from Chicago, and he's interested in still renting hotels into that area. And we really hope to get the casino at some point in time, because the canary, the guy from the East Coast, he's still willing and waiting to build a casino there. So, whenever the state or the governor decides to sign the deal, then we'll be able to move forward on that stuff. And we're not putting that in the basket right now. We're kind of pushing it out, because it's been out there for a long time with no results. So, we're looking at this one developer who really, really is interested in moving forward at this time.
Well, we just have to, when something starts, other people...
Yes, if you build it, they will come.
Keep in mind, none of this is on residential law.
Right, right.
It will make no future impact on schools. There won't be any students added or anything. This is all commercial industrial entertainment trying to pull acres that way.
How do the developers gauge that it'll take 20, 30 years? How do they...
Well, right now, they don't have it. You know, they're not going to pick ground this year, probably next year. So...
See, yeah, once the TIP is approved, it's still going to take a while, because we got to go to get another taxing, 144 is the school district that's in there. We're talking to them as well. And I think they'll turn it down and represent them.
No, I don't represent them, 144.
161. 160. See, and we have to do more work, so...
I have a point I want to add, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor. It's just, because the extension has to be done by the legislature, they're also subject to the legislature's cycle. Okay, so if they don't get the approvals from the school districts pretty soon, it'll push it back a whole other year.
Yeah. So, you guys will be like, you know, one of the first to say yay or nay to us. I think that's another whole process that we got to go through. So, it's not an easy task that we have to go through.
And this is involving a buyer, installer, and investor situation where they want to do the transfers and be comfortable to know that if we have another economic downturn or something like that, they can sit on the property. That's part of the need to, you know, get it going now, is they want to feel like the TIP is being reset to its original years. Since 10 years have passed, we had it 12. You know, it kind of basically brings back the original TIP that was intended to go.
What's the plan for the developers? For the developers that need to get, how, how to build this land already?
It's not, it's all vacant.
I mean, I see, I see a big parcel of land.
We're imagining the majority of the TIP funds will have to be used for roads, infrastructures, just to get it into being part of our city, just like the developer.
Now, what happens when, like Walmart, they got these abatements and stuff like that? How does that turn out? Is that going to come back and ask us for an abatement too?
Well, I can't speak for Walmart, you know.
No, I'm talking about the people that's coming.
Yeah, well, they ask for additional, knowing to know, you know, until they come to us.
But it's possible.
Yeah, we don't know.
The difference with an abatement, Mark, is you get half taxes. You're not frozen at all.
And the other thing I'd say...
Whatever that incremental is, you're getting half of it. You're growing, please.
And you get to make a decision on abatements.
Yeah.
The TIP is the, the village does the, the city does the TIP. They need our permission if they want to extend it. But on abatements, every district gets to make the decision for itself.
That's true, so we can decline that request.
And it's, well, that property, or the other property to the right there, what does that sound like? That's 90x by there, where the Walmart, the market seat and all.
It's not included, yes.
And that wasn't abatement.
Right, yes.
I think they're... But no, sir, I think there is.
Yeah, it's about, absolutely.
Walmart and the theater, and they've stayed.
And as you know, we built, not built, we bought and marked this over there. And that really improved the area.
That's where it started, the theater and the 104.
But our abatement with Walmart has expired, so we're not giving them any at this point in time. Just one last thing about this strip of land up here. It's an empty prime zone, I don't have to really do all of that for being an empty prime zone. That is going to be one of the incentives to that might draw developers to come in as well. And that's one of the incentives that Cook County is...
Yeah, to get sales taxes.
Sales taxes.
And to get its other tax discounts and structures here.
None of that takes away from you.
No, no, I just wanted to put that out there as an incentive. Any other questions?
I just had a feature, said on a square mile, 640 acres to a square mile. And that looks like probably half a square mile?
Almost, yeah. Almost do.
I'd say probably half a square mile. So it's like 320 or something.
And this chart that you're showing us here, this is just what was in the TIF on it, it's not, and I don't know what our tax base was, and.
I don't either, but it just shows.
But it's just showing tax with the differences, $75.
So $75 is all there, no way it could, no act.
If the boards were interested in asking for some concessions with regard to this, things like if you created another TIF, you wouldn't transfer the surplus from the TIF into another TIF or anything, you don't have another TIF right now, but certain other things like that, that if this board were interested in that, would that be negotiable for as far as the city?
We would be willing to sit down and discuss that with you, you know, if that be the case.
But I'm just asking.
Good time, yeah. Yeah, we have no problem doing that with you, if that's one of the concessions that we want to offer. That's the discussion, yes.
So the biggest thing for us is it doesn't cost that much, it just changes money.
Right. That's easy for us.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, all members, appreciate it.
Next, some representatives from the village of Posen, they're Abiliak. Little bit different, it would be, yes, it would be separate.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Frank Abiliak, I'm here at Posen. I appreciate that Kendall, your time and the retired district's 28 board members. Our situation is much different in country of hills. Ours is a life, safety, health, safety issue. We need to do an infrastructure with a water tower to increase pressure on the north end of our business, our north end of town for residential and our industrial area. So that being said, I'm gonna ask Bob Shulkey from Canada, explain some things to you about what we want to do. I'm fairly new at this because we just got into office on May 9th, but I'm versed on this particular TIF one. And Bob, take your time.
Thank you. Go to that one slide that you guys had with the dollars on it. Thank you.
Thanks. You know, as Steve was pointing out, you know, there is deferment on what the district would get, you know, if this is extended. And, you know, we were within the major of that 258,000 per year, that's really what you're for voting, and that's what the village would continue for funding largely on public improvements. You know, the public improvements, I think, given the district, they are mapped out, Robinson Engineering has put together a pretty detailed review of both the water and the sewer, and we, and the village has started on some of that. I mean, the two, for three big issues, as we see it, and it's been pointed out to us over the years, has been the pressure and capacity on the north side of town. What that really means is you're gonna need another water tower there. Secondly, there has to be redundancy with respect to facilities that are south of 147th. Right now, there's only one line. You know, part of what we're doing right now is extending another line, easements were obtained, and then thirdly, we'll be piping throughout most of the industrial and commercial area that is in the TIF and also, you know, largest part of the town, industrial and commercial basis is in the TIF. You know, what we tried to do, as we came to their initial meeting, you know, two things that were suggested to us. One is a declaration surplus, and at least we were talking originally about 20%, if we do it, we'd like to see that bumped up. So as a result, out of that 258, maybe about 60,000, between 55 and 60,000 would be returned to you and there'd be a lower amount going to the village. The other thing we heard you was doing increases, an annual increase in that sharing percentage based upon if we get grants or we get other sources of funding other than TIF to fund those improvements, and they'll be detailed in a intergovernmental agreement, we could identify that for the district. But to the extent that there's a direct drop, and I think one example would be, you know, if there was an 11% drop because we've got grants, we would increase that funding percentage up by 11% to 33%. And that would be done on an annual basis, there'd be a recalibration, you know, we would disclose it.
Did you put it down or is it like, it goes up or continues?
Well, no, we fixed the number. We fixed the number and the idea would be if it goes down, not, you would have relief on the, on the sharing percentage of that. So fix the number, I mean, it's our best guess, of course, you know, engineers are involved, so we got contingencies in there and everything. But the idea would be to fix the number that identifies those capital needs, to the extent the village is able to get funding through grants, IPA loans, or to the extent that they could even fund, you know, part of, one of the things we had thought about is, you know, to the extent they could fund it themselves through the GO, it'd be another source of funding other than TIF. And as a result, you'd have a recalibration and increase the sharing percentage. And that would be reported, you know, we do that annually. So those were two suggestions I thought we heard from that initial meeting, about a month, about a month ago. So that would be a modification, you know, in, we, like I said, declare surplus on 22% and that's for everybody, all the districts, the township, the grade school, everybody gets their piece. Yours is between 55 or 60,000 dollars depending on, you know, the tax rates or the amounts collected, but that would float, if the amount goes up, then, you know, the 22%, 22 and a half percent is based on whatever comes in.
Have any other taxing bodies made an official vote on this?
Yes, we have 11 of 14 that have accepted, 11 of 14, three that were working. At the end now is District 228, 143 and a half, and 147. I've been to a board meeting with 147, I've been in contact with Fred Olson who represents 143 and a half. I've sent in the same intergovernmental agreement that I have for your district here, that I think Dr. Kendall had given to you already at 22 and a half percent. I don't know if the rest of the board was able to look at yet, but I have extra copies here.
So the one that I hit was the original, it was 22, so I didn't.
What are your concerns if you don't get this extension?
The life, safety, health issues are this, Mr. Turner. We have industrial in our, in our community in this TIF that right now have sprinkler systems that can't function without that water. So that's the life and health issue. District 143 and a half, schools are right there by that, that area where we have low pressure on the north end of town. And remember, Posen's only 1.1 square mile. It's a small town, 5,928 residents. We don't have much development. We're working on that, get me wrong, we're, we're out there, we're knocking on doors and talking to people and I hope in the very near future, that's gonna help us. This is a life crisis, health crisis issue right now, and we need to get this water development and we need this funding to help us with that on the north end of town.
What did you meant, particularly about if you weren't allocated the extension, what other means would you be able to use besides?
Well, that we have any other means available.
What other sources would be?
In the near term, we've asked Robinson to look at the ability for either IPA loans or any other grants that might be available, that's still an open book. We are crunched for credit, I'll be honest with you, as it relates to the village's general fund, the issues we've come up with is the ability to access the market and it's a work in progress. It's gonna take several years to get to your question, we can't do it right away, the general fund has to be stabilized, has to be improved, and that's a three to five year program. We're not there yet. And by that, in that interim period, we're hard pressed to try to figure out how to fund this.
But I have to figure the potential for any businesses that have left the area under these situations to leave.
We had to, we had to, that's a very good observation, because for Aaron Roke, in order, they're going, undergoing their third expansion, in order to provide pressure, we had to put booster pumps in which the TIF fund had to pay for in order to allow them to pass code and to get into play.
And plus, we have a fire that uses that booster system, we think it'll break the main alleyway to the water tower. That's on the other side of 147th or just south of 147th.
And it's a lot, piece by piece basis, those guys, there's a few other fiber drum, it's the same kind of thing that has to be addressed. When they have their testing, in order to meet the pressure numbers, we had to put in boosters. You can't over time, you, there has to be a less piecemeal. One thing the Robinson guys have pointed out, it's been piecemeal probably for the last 10 years.
Yes. We've been fine watering, it takes them three days now.
They started, we started slow, just by looking at the valves and doing a sewer and flow study. That was done in 2017. And whatever could be done on the, let's say, the less comprehensive basis was tried first, in terms of cleaning all the valves, replacing them, when we looked at the flow numbers, there's just not enough pressure. That tank, there has to be another tank on it.
Does that affect the insurance rate?
Certainly does for the industrial. We just, I'm not saying yes.
And that's how we actually found out about the problem about a year ago, is when they had their inspectors come in, they said, well, wait a minute, you've got this system set up, the sprinkler system, there's not enough pressure from the feed down the street in order to power this thing.
I mean, we have loads of fire pain in the region as well.
Well, the fire department radio is still exceptional because our department there, they're an ALS in the firefighting experience. But we do have another pipeline that we had to connect to Rhode Island on the other side. For firefighters, we have that, but for the immediate use of the sprinkler system, that would just bust our lines all around. And this is something that's new to me. This was handed over to us, it wasn't addressed, but it's something we need to fix. It's our responsibility as a village to fix this and we have to fix this.
Water wasn't part of the TIF plan?
It was, but other things were addressed, and I think I mentioned it before, unfortunately, it seemed like more visible projects, streets, alleys, sidewalks. It is what it is.
There's one problem, I highly welcome. I'm currently paying every month for our new water tower. So I'm having a heart attack explaining to my residents that I'm giving away $3 million while we're each paying 20 bucks a month, 10 bucks a month to build there. So there's other, I mean, obviously, there's other ways.
There's other ways, but as it relates to the econ, you know, the economics, it's, we look at it, it's just not, it's not feasible right now. Because if we try to put a safety valve in there as it relates to, as other sources are identified, or there's a way to efficiently access the market and price, if we have that reduction and increase the sharing percentage, but right now, that seems to be, that seems to be the best way to try to address it.
On behalf of all state representation from the State Division, this SP bill has to get presented in the spring session because this, this TIF expires in December of 2018. I had the opportunity to meet the representative, State Representative Will Davis, Senator Harris, and we have their full support.
They're not losing anything anymore. I mean, it's easy for that to, because.
It's just something, I wanted to bring to your attention, and not only do we have 11 of the 14 taxable bodies that have accepted this to vote, but that we've talked to our representatives in the state senate, we needed to, to help us move this along, hopefully in a quick process.
Well, if they're not able to support their industrial area, do you want anyone to do that? This place is decided to stop leaving.
Yes, they start to, yeah, in fact, that's why.
Aaron Roke, Aaron Roke is threatening to leave.
To go to Indiana.
So I, I don't know. We need to do something with the water source there. Will he, I don't know, but he's threatening, I don't know that he will or not, but it's a big corporation, it's a $25 million corporation, we would definitely lose Mr. Dork.
And three expansions.
So did you, did you talk with him, saying, hey, we have an improvement tonight?
I've talked to him and he's, he's had a, I guess he's, he's comfortable to see what happens. If, that's a true word, comfortable. So he's the kind of guy where he has a big company and he would pack up and vote.
And he's saying he's expanding, because y'all have found land off, is that area land off of?
Well, we still have expansion north, north of that facility of Aaron Roke. We have approximately 25 acres there. And I know Fiber Drum just bought about 10 of those acres. For the corporation.
I know, I kind of have an idea of where north is, because there's supposed to be a little strip.
Sorry, south.
South.
They're south of 39th Street, where the bus company is, just south of there, that industrial park. No, that's 147th, it's a western, God help us one day if that should come, if Senator O'Malley would do that, that would be a wonderful thing. It's not far fetched that it would happen, I can tell you that, but it would be wonderful for the village because with that, everybody would want to build on 147th, it would increase our traffic flow by 25 to 30% because we've had traffic studies completed already, it's like, we'll still develop if that should happen. So it would be significant for our common, it would help everybody, all our taxable lines.
And again, you know, you don't want to give excuses or point out, you know, what you're talking about with your, you know, undergoing and the local, but, you know, that interchange improvement was, was during that four or five year construction period, we probably lost two or three projects on 147th in which, you know, property was assembled by the village, just banned, I think, I mean, that's just banned.
Dr. Kendall, I did, by chance, bring the 25% of the government.
So I guess to summarize here, if you had other options, if you're interested in doing that, but that's on a timeframe that's five years.
Three to five years.
Three to five years to get the house in order, in order to, if you had the house in order, you probably would have, you wouldn't have been here.
I don't think we would have been here.
We're working diligently, this year we will come in under budget, last year they were a million over, a year before that they were over. This year, we're right at the pace to come in under, and we will. And again, we're trying to pull some do better next year to help us with our funding purposes on the road, and that's what we're working on, Dr.
So and I think that's why I brought this to the entire board, to ball over, while it's not a school issue, it certainly is a community issue and things that you and your taxpayers who you represent have to make the decision on, so I don't want to seem wimpy by saying, I'm out, but I really believe this is appropriate for you guys to really hash over and make the best call, representing your bodies and being able to take it with you.
We realize it's a very, very big decision, but we're coming to you because we need your help. And we have a short time for, a very short time.
And like I said, you know, I've known John and worked with you guys, I mean, you could look at the wording on that, I mean, we want to be, you know, fair as it relates to recalibrating this thing, as other funding sources, because the idea is, TIF, you said it, I mean, is a kind of a last resort, you know, we'd be here if we had a different option or all of a sudden state, you know, said that they had $8 million in funding for the water system, we'd be right there and wouldn't impose on 228. And that's the truth.
I had contact with State Representative Will Davis on Sunday evening, and I asked if he could make it. And State Representative Davis is here, if anybody has any questions about the process for the SP bill, how it goes through the House and everything, if anybody had a question, he's, he's here to answer that.
I agree, there's one question, how much does the water tower cost?
Combined water improvements, and we've spent, become engineering 101 now, it's not just the water tower, the water tower, plus redundancy on the system and the piping, the Cadillac there is about $9 million.
I think everything is over here in the.
And then, John, because these are engineers, they always put them in tandem, there's about 8 million in sewer work, but the priority is the water, priority is the waters.
The station, tank itself is too much.
Yeah, yeah, and they have three sites.
It's our delivery, our sewage isn't as bad, I mean, we can, we double what we have. I'm working on a brand right now with NWRD from 139th to 142nd and Harrison. I think that'll. I think that'll help us, because that's a little flood area that we have issues with when it rains heavy, everything seems to fall there. So we're currently working on a grant with them on that. We just received the permanent paper block grant recently from them. So I feel that board has some success with that. I have Robinson Engineering working on the prints on that right now. And that's right there in that TIF district down the north end of town.
So that, that'll address that issue.
That'll take care of it.
And that's more immediate, that grant?
Yes.
The grant is more immediate for that particular problem.
For that flooding right there.
Flooding.
Yes. But that's separate from this water issue that we're here on for the life, safety, health issue.
So it's just.
This is something we need immediately addressed. And I'm sorry, it came to me, and because it came to me, I have to bring it to the board. It's that urgent, that important, that dangerous of a level for life, safety, and health. I can't express that enough.
So does the board feel comfortable entertaining a vote next Tuesday?
I would.
So I would ask, we'll go back to John for helping with some wording. We have polls over here. I'd love to give a copy of that to you to look at. And over the course of the next couple of days, if things come to your mind or you have any questions, get those to me right away. We'll make sure we get you all the information we need to make a, for a decision.
I would propose that they just.
Yeah, I would like John to look at it. That'll be part of the package.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time tonight. I know you have a lot of things to do. I just came from our board meeting, ran over. State Representative Davis, thank you so much for coming on to see me, sir. Thank you again. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.